Okay, just for clarification, we recessed out of executive session and we're going to reconvene the finance meeting here, so is there a motion to adjourn finance?
Move to adjourn finance.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Finance is adjourned. Okay, I'd like to call this January 27th council meeting to order. We have a voice scout here, Mitchell Rittenmeyer. Is that correct? He's from true 507 First Christian Methodist Church, and I would ask him to come to the microphone and lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance, so if you please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Coin.
Here.
Hazelton. Hefinger.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Reading of the minutes?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
I move that the minutes from the regular council meeting of January 13, 2020, is prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second.
Discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Reports of standing committees, finance committee meeting meant prior to the council meeting and will again meet two weeks from today. Health, safety, and sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, prior to the finance meeting, we had a health, safety, and sanitation meeting. Got an update from the service department for the sanitation, the mayor from Healthy Medina, the fire chief, Bob Painter, for the fire department, and Lieutenant Burke Beckler from the police department. Gave us an update, what we can expect and what's planned for 2020, and it was pretty enlightening, and hopefully we'll go from there and have another successful year. Thank you, gentlemen, for your participation.
Thank you. Public properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and no report this evening.
Special legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have nothing to report, but I'm working with Cath, with the clerk of council, to schedule a special legislation meeting on the medical marijuana issue with city employees.
Thank you. Streets and sidewalks, Mr. Hefinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report and no meeting scheduled this time.
And emerging technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Request for council action, we have several for finance, we have 2016 budget amendments, 2017 transfer requests, MCRC capital contribution, 2018 expenditure over $15,000, T Segal Consulting Bicentennial, 2019 expenditure over $15,000 Technology Engineering Group IT, 2020 fiscal year 18 chip rehab, 533 South Broadway, 2021 RFQ RFP chip CDBG program grant consultant, 2022 combined court project construction manager at risk fees, 2023 amend ordinance 19619 purchase agreement with County Park District, 2024 purchase Ventrack 4500P and approve trade-in for the parks, 2025 memo of understanding with the City of Medina Railway, and 2026 bids for the 2020 concrete street repair program. Reports of municipal officers, Mayor Hamel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The parking deck construction has been ceased for the winter, for those that may not have noticed yet. The long-term lots are still available at the Castle Noel Lot, the, what's termed the Fekley Lot, which is on the north side of Time Two, the county courthouse parking deck, and the county administration lot extension off of East Liberty Street. There's also the parking lot between West Liberty and West Washington with the Huntington Bank drive-through, has both 10-hour and 4-hour spaces. The muni court lot is available on weekends and evenings. Three-hour lots were established at the open areas between Sully's Patio and the Porter's Shoe Store, as well as the lot at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Liberty Street. City Hall parking is permitted for short durations along West Friendship Street, adjacent to the Medina County Historical Society, and we added two handicap spaces just outside the northwest doors of Medina City Hall. The utility drop boxes and post office mailbox were moved to the muni court lot and will likely stay there even after the deck is completed. The mini library that was over with the utility drop boxes was moved to the three-hour lot at the southeast corner of Elmwood and West Liberty Street. On Monday, January 20th, at 7:00 PM, the Martin Luther King Celebration was held at St. Matthew's Lutheran Church. I'd like to thank Councilman Rose, Councilman Simpson, and Finance Director Keith Durham for attending with me, as well as a number of the county officials and Judge Warner. The annual four chaplain service will be held on Wednesday, February 5th, 2020, at 7:00 PM at St. Francis Xavier Church. The address is 606 East Washington Street. And just a heads up that the 26th Annual ICE Festival dates are February 14th through 21st, and this is put on by Elegant ICE Creations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. There are a number of items on the agenda that originated with finance, and I will discuss those when we get there.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Lieutenant Burke Beckler, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple items to note for council and the public this evening. We have our next round of ribbon cuttings on Friday, February 7th. We have two that day, the first one being at 11:00 AM for a new business called Get In Gear Business Solutions. They're located at 437 Lafayette Road, Suite 240. And then the next one is at 3 o'clock in the afternoon for Mary Christine Photography, again, another new business at 113 West Liberty Street. And just a reminder that these are in conjunction with the Main Street Medina and Medina Chamber of Commerce, and I'll be sending out the electronic invites in the next day or so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Painter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Wright, Recreation Center Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Chancellor Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Gladys, Building Official.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you. I just want to give a quick update about our Brick Street, South Broadway. We are finally out to bid. Bids are due next week, which will open and hopefully award the following Board of Control meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Picoli, Service Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report, other than just a comment to say appreciative of the mild winter we've had. We've not used many chemicals this winter season. Thank you.
Thank you. Confirmation of council appointment, we have one for the Income Tax Review Board, Keith Hughes, for a term expiring 12/31/22.
Move to confirm the council appointment.
Second.
Any discussion on the council's appointment? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the council's appointment?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Notices, communications, and petitions, we have one for liquor permit not to object to the issuance of a new D1 permit to Grab and Go Firewood LLC, doing business as Grab and Go Beverage and Market, 236B North State Road and Patio, Medina.
Move not to object.
Second, not to object.
Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Unfinished business, we have none. Introduction of visitors. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to speak on any issue or concerns which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to introduction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair and a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the front right microphone and state their name and address so it can be entered in the minutes. Members of the public will be permitted the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meeting as determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time?
My name's Kathy Jones. You want my complete residence address or just share in township?
I think she has to enter in the minutes.
2606 Hidden Spring Lane, Wadsworth, Ohio 44281.
Thank you.
Before the meeting, I talked to your service director, Mr. Piccolo, and gave him some information, so I have some handouts to give you all. It concerns de-icer that's being used in the city and throughout different counties in the state. It's called Aqua Salina. There's three different products that we know about. It has, it's radioactive, and it's harmful to health, whether it's on the road or in your walkway or used as a de-icer. And Mr. Piccolo said that you do have some, so we're trying to inform the different communities of, throughout Ohio. We've spoken before, the Ohio Legislature, about it already. There's quite a few lobbyists that are in support of using this, but several agencies have tested it and tested the radiation and it's above EPA limits, and it's highly toxic and it's highly radioactive and cancer-causing, and even the brine, it's the brine that's used as a de-icer on the roads. It's Aqua Salina, if that's what's being used. And that's what's radioactive. The brine truck drivers don't even know about it. They are getting cancer from it. So this past weekend, there was a presentation in St. Clairsville, Ohio, in Belmont County, in Coolville, Ohio, Belmont County, Southern Ohio, in Youngstown, and in Pittsburgh. And if you look at the latest issue of Rolling Stone for February, there is like a article about this brine and what it's causing. And this researcher, reporter, had spoken to a lot of people and did his research over two years of, so it's got quite a bit in it. And one of the other people that was speaking in Youngstown, besides this Justin Noble, who's a reporter, and Julie Weatherington Rice, who was a scientist, an environmental scientist who studied this, was the Youngstown, Ohio, Fire Chief, and he had a lot to say about how dangerous it is even to, even to the first responders who aren't aware of how bad it is, and it's all in the article. But I do have some handouts I made for you all, and you can read through it, and then if you need more information, I have people that you can contact who are more of authority on it than I am. So we're just going to the different townships, the different cities, and people throughout counties in Ohio. And what it is, you'll know when it's on the road, because I'm sure you've noticed on the state roads or on 76 or the highways, when you see the thick yellow, thick white lines, it's like, it's a de-icer. They put it on before, on the snow and ice, but it's really thick. It sticks to your car. It's not like regular salt. So I'm sure you've seen it on the roads. You can see the tracks of it, and you see the trucks doing it. So that's pretty much all I have to say. I would, I would like Mr. Piccolo's email address before I leave, though, so I can give him more information on it, and then he can let you all know. Any questions? That's it in a nutshell. Do you have any questions for me?
No, if you could give the clerk here your packet, we could hand it out amongst the members, that'd be great.
And you can also check the...
Watch out the cord, the cord, the cord, the cord.
Well, she can make copies for all of us.
If you have copies that you want, I can just pass them out, yeah. Oh, sure.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address, Mrs. Walker?
Pat Walker, 523 East Friendship Street, Medina. I'm up here as part of the Savior Courthouse Committee. First of all, I wanted to state the goals of the Savior Courthouse Committee. It's, one, to have a public process to determine what we need to do about the new courthouse, whether we have one, whether we don't, what we have. Second is to get the people to have input, and that includes a vote. Recently, the Medina County Prosecutor was asked whether or not you can put the courthouse renovation project on the ballot. The prosecutor correctly answered that under the Ohio Revised Code, there was nothing to put the renovation of the courthouse on the ballot. But that was the wrong question to be asked. The question is, can the funding for the courthouse be put on the ballot? The answer is yes. The county commissioners have the option to put on the ballot the funding, the bonds for the courthouse project. It's, it appears that this project's going to be $40 million, if it goes ahead, and it's going to involve the change of the square. And this is important, that the people get a vote. So Ohio Revised Code, Section 133.18, indicates that the county commissioners may put on the ballot the bond levy for the courthouse project. I'd like to thank this council for setting up the meeting with the county for a discussion on what's going to happen. I think that's long overdue, as I understand today that it was set for next Tuesday, February 4th, at 4:00 PM here at City Hall. And earlier in the day, noon on February 4th, there's going to be a steering committee meeting, which is also open to the public, and the county administration building on the third floor and the balcony rooms, and urge all citizens who have an interest to attend both meetings, and I think that's a very wise move, and I think it's very needed at this time. I also thank the council for not taking any action or any vote today on request for council action number 20-021-27, which involved giving money to Gilbane Building Company, which I understand didn't say in the request, but it was for the courthouse project, because there has been no contract at the moment between anyone in Gilbane Building Company. But even if there had, at this point in time, it's premature. The last thing we had heard from the commissioners, what they hadn't voted on, that they had a plan to, first of all, build a building behind the 1969 courthouse. It's the building with the columns, and then tear down the 1969 courthouse, and then give the 1841 courthouse to the city for the municipal court, and then the county would take the present municipal court building. And I understand that the city hasn't had any opportunity to make any comments on this and hasn't made anything, any comments public on this. But that is what the commissioners are talking about. This, that project would not help the city at all. First of all, the restrooms and the elevator and the heating and air conditioning for the 1841 building are in the connection between, well, not all of them in the connection, but are in the 1969 courthouse. If you just take the 1841 courthouse, the brick structure that is the 1841 courthouse and its additions, there are no public restrooms in it, there is not an elevator, and it does not have the heating system. And if that is what the city is going to get, you will not be able to use it and renovate it for the $8 million. So I think it's very important, at this point, for the city and the county to look at this. I also think it's very important for the county commissioners to put this on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council at this time? Okay, we have introduction and consideration of ordinances, resolutions. We have ordinance 1319 and ordinance amending section 91704A of the codified ordinances of the city of Medina, Ohio relative to the water rates.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you know, but I'll explain for people at home, the city purchases our water from Avon Lake Regional Water. They pull it out of Lake Erie, they do the treatment, and then it's piped down here. The contract that the city has with Avon Lake from way back in the early 2000s, when they started doing that, restricts the price that we pay to being only slightly more than the lowest price that they charge in their city, which keeps our rates minimized. And they're required to give us six months' notice of rate increases. They have an annual meeting, which Nino and I and several others attended towards the end of last year, where they announced that the rate increases that they had given us last year have gone up. So this ordinance is to increase the city's water rates to our residents by the same percentage that the rate is being increased, the rate that we pay is being increased, so that we'll be able to pay for the water. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Ordinance 13-19 passes six zero.
Ordinance 14-20. Well, isn't that supposed to be 13-20?
The first one was 13-20. Oh, yes, it's supposed to be 20.
13-19.
Supposed to be 13-20.
It takes a while.
Okay. 14-20, an ordinance adopting a sexual offender plan of action policy for the Medina Community Recreation Center.
Move to approve?
Second.
Mr. Wright?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is in regards to requesting council to adopt a sexual offender policy for Medina Community Recreation Center. We have had a sexual offender policy in place since 2004, and in 2012, we started an ID policy, which requires scanning IDs to help enforce this through a program called SafePoint. This is in place to help ensure the safety of our patrons and the students who use the facility. I want our, I'm sorry, our law department requested this to be adopted into ordinance, and I want to thank the law department for review, changes, and approval of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, this is, the policy's already been in existence at the recreation center. This is just to adopt it after numerous discussions around the state with Mr. Huber and his cohort saying that we should put it into a law to have better enforceability, and so that's what we're doing. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the roll on adoption of ordinance 14-20?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 14-20 passes six zero.
Ordinance 15-20, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a three-year contract with Rayne Associates, Inc., for the preparation of a city's caffer in accordance with the county principles generally accepted in the United States of America, GAAP, for the years ending December 31, 2019, December 31, 2020, and December 31, 2021.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause is requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Durham.
Thank you, Mr. President. Rayne Associates handle the preparation of our annual financial statement. The state auditor audits the financial statement. This is the contract with Ray to do that for the next three years. They've been doing it for a number of years. And the emergency clause is so that they can get to work right away, we can meet the deadlines.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Ordinance 15-20 passes six zero.
Ordinance 16-20, an ordinance authorizing the payment of $40,000 to GenMet Construction, LLC, for the private home rehabilitation at 1843 Berkshire Drive, Brunswick, as part of the fiscal year 18 chip grant program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Mendel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is a private rehabilitation project under our current chip grant. It's at 1843 Berkshire Drive in Brunswick, Ohio. The contract amount is a little less than $38,000, but we are requesting a PO of $40,000 to allow for any change orders that may come out of the process. The emergency clause is requested so that we can expedite payment, the project and payment to the contractor, so they can have the capital to continue bidding on chip projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Ordinance 16-20 passes six zero.
Ordinance 17-20, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $50,000 to Signal Service Company for the street department.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Picoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city signalization system has necessary maintenance repairs and items that are needed throughout the year, so this will also cover testing for our preemption system, which is important to our safety services. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 18-20, an ordinance authorizing the expenditure of $70,000 to Lake County Sewer Co. for the street department.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Picoli.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this request will allow the street department to continue the effort, working with the contractor for the cleaning, prepping, grouting of our city's storm sewer maintenance. Over the last few years, we've taken an aggressive approach and have accomplished a lot of work with regard to the issues that we've had in the storm sewer system.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll on the adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson.
Yes.
Coin.
Yes.
Hefinger.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Ordinance 18-20 passes six zero.
So, PLCs are programmable logic controllers. Last year in 2019, the water department implemented Phase 1 of a transition from radio frequency to cellular. So this is Phase 2, and this, this is for the towers and the pump stations. And the request will allow for the real-time communication from one pump station to another, as well as our water towers, and also allow the city water department personnel to monitor, manage, and control the water department through electronic devices through a secure network. So it's an upgrade that hasn't happened since 2001.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance?
Coy?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 19-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 20-20, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to advertise for competitive bids and award a contract to the successful bidder for the one-year supply of various kinds of maintenance materials needed for the streets and water lines, including, but not limited to, salt, the chemicals used for the treatment of water, and the water meters to be used for various departments of the city of Medina.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Piccoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. As the request states, as you read, the annual material bids that we use in our service department and parks department, it's just another opportunity to secure good pricing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance?
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-20 passes 6-0.
Resolution 21-20, a resolution authorizing the application for grant assistance from the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation, for the Medina Municipal Airport Remark Airfield Project.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This requests the authorization to apply for the grant from the Ohio Department of Transportation. This grant will pay for 95% of the cost, including design, construction, engineering, and construction, to remark the airfield.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the resolution?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Resolution 21-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 22-20, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a task order number 3 through the agreement with Delta Airport Consultants, Inc., for the professional services at the Medina Municipal Airport relative to project number 1063, Remark Airfield.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ties into the previous ordinance. This is an agreement with Delta Engineering to do the design and bid preparation for that project.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the ordinance?
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordinance 22-20 passes 7-0.
Ordinance 23-20, an ordinance amending Sections 3105 and 3107 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Finance Department in creating the position and accepting the job description of accounts payable clerk.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I requested this because we had an opening in the accounts payable position that we were, had very much difficulty filling for a period of about two years. We felt that the pay was a part of that, so we are clarifying and updating the job description and changing the pay for this position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coy?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Ordinance 23-20 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 24-20, an ordinance amending Sections 3102 and 3105 of the Salaries and Benefits Code of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Municipal Court Probation Officer Group Facilitator position.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it at this time.
My second includes emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. I believe the emergency clause is due to the nature of the grant that funds part of this, but I'm not sure if this is for the court, and this is for this position that's funded partially through that grant.
Correct. I think it's because it's January 1st of 2020, so it needs to be approved because it's retroactive.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role in the approval of the emergency clause?
Coy?
Yes.
Hefinger?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.[1531.71]